Thank you, welcome. This is tonight's school meeting, so this is actually our unique yearly meeting where it's a two-for-one meeting. You get two meetings for one, no extra charge, just for those keeping track. So we recognize there's a lot of interest in the budget discussion. I imagine that's why everyone's here tonight. We certainly appreciate everybody coming out. We do, of course, welcome anyone to stay afterwards for our regular business meetings. That's also a lot of fun and good stuff to learn. So what we're going to do, just want to kind of go over the course of events, how everything's going to work out here. So Dr. Lardy is going to take over and do the actual budget presentation for everyone. Afterward, we're going to open up for public comment, for anyone who has interest in making a comment. So the only thing we ask as far as for the comment is to please adhere to the following, so we can kind of keep this orderly, and give everyone a chance to speak. You need to use one of the two mics at either end there. Please identify yourself and your street. Keep your comments to three minutes or less, because again, we want to give everyone a chance to speak and ask questions and learn. And just bear in mind, this isn't intended as a back-and-forth. So you may make a comment, that doesn't mean we're necessarily going to get in a back-and-forth with you. We'll certainly make every effort to address concerns if they're raised, but just for the sake of efficiency, we just want to run it that way. Again, we're going to have a regular meeting at eight, so we want to try to move the comments along. If it becomes a point where it starts to get a little repetitive with the comments, where we're kind of all, we've already brought up that point, we may sort of gently push people if anyone has other business to bring up, or other comments or questions, whatever the case is, we may push people in that direction, just as a heads-up for that. And lastly, I just want to thank the members of the Select Board that showed up tonight. So thank you to Kevin and Cece for coming tonight and learning. I also appreciate life coming and everyone else from the town that's here. So on behalf of the school committee, we appreciate you guys taking the time to learn about our process. Please, anyone and everyone, ask all the questions you have. We are as open as possible. To use a really bad joke, we were happy to show our work. So we want you to see exactly what goes in this process, exactly what this budget's made up of. There's a lot of work involved in this, but we really want everybody to leave here with a sense of knowing exactly what this budget entails and how thoughtful the process has been. So without further ado, Ingrid.
Great. So thank you, everybody, and welcome. I'm going to have to speak from here tonight, because we have Norfolk cable here, and they are recording this as they do all of our school committee meetings, and they will put that up. But the only way they can get good quality sound is if I use this microphone. So if you can't hear me at any point, just signal, and I can try to make sure that I'm projecting well. So thanks, everybody, for coming tonight. We appreciate you coming to learn more about the school budget. As Mr. Goyle said, we're going to start with about a 20-25 minute presentation. I hope by the end of the presentation, you'll have a really good sense of the budget history in Norfolk, how we've developed our budget, how our town's spending education dollars compared to other districts in this area, as well as a really good sense of what our budget drivers are for the 2021 budget. You should have a copy on your seat of these slides in bigger detail, so if you can't see them, you have a mirror presentation in your seat. So I like to always start by sharing with the public what our vision statement and our mission statement are for the Norfolk schools. These are the guideposts that we use for making all budget decisions. So every year, the town has limited financial new revenue, limited resources. We recognize that, and when we have to make decisions where we're reducing programs or streamlining costs, we always think about the district's mission and vision, and we make decisions thinking about what the impact of each decision will be on a child's academic program, as well as their broader education. So the vision for the Norfolk Public Schools is to teach, inspire, empower, and succeed. And our mission statement, which Thomas usually has the pleasure of reading at the beginning of all of our meetings, is to operate a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students, and through school, family, and community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world. So tonight's presentation will be broken down into four main components. I'm going to start by reviewing the Norfolk budget history and our per pupil spending comparisons. After that, we'll go on to talk about the budget request for 2021 and what our primary budget drivers are. Then we will talk about an issue that I often get questions about from the public, and that's what is our enrollment projection look like and what are our class sizes. Last, I'd like to share some efforts the district has made to find cost savings and to provide a fiscally responsible budget. The treat at the very end, for those of you who stay with us, in order to be able to show the citizens and the public what return you get on your education dollars, our technology team put together a video of our students, and they'll share that with you. So we'll end with that. Okay. So starting with the budget history and our per pupil spending comparisons, in order to really understand where we are currently in our Norfolk budget process, it's really critical to take a historical look. Back in the years between 2008 and 2013, the town of Norfolk, as many, many communities across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts experienced a recession. During those fiscal years, it was really hard for the town to provide appropriate funding to fund the schools at a reasonable level. In order for us to open our budget and open our doors in September with the same staffing levels, same resources, and same programs we ended with in June, it typically takes 2.5 percent, between 2.5 and 3 percent. So when you're looking at the years between 2008 and 2013, you see the district had average increases of 1.13 percent. There was actually a year where there was a negative 4 percent, a negative 0.96, a 0 percent. So during those years, there were really significant programmatic cuts that were made across the district, a lot of staffing, our foreign language program, our enrichment program. It was a really difficult time. At the same time that the district was going through those cuts, there were significant reductions, because the state and federal government were also dealing with difficult budget circumstances. So all of the entitlement grants and allocations that we receive annually that support our operating costs, those federal and state grants also were declining. So between 2009 and current, we've lost almost half a million dollars in annual state funding. And the state has also, during that period of time, implemented a lot of what we call unfunded mandates. So unfunded mandates are regulations that we have to adhere to and follow that have a budget impact, but no state or federal revenue to support. So that would be things like the adoption of new curriculum standards, mandated required professional development. McKinney-Bento transportation is unusual. That's a law that the state passed that districts have to provide transportation to students that are homeless or placed in foster care from wherever they're temporarily residing back to the district. Those are unanticipated costs. They vary from year to year, but that's a federal and state regulation. We also have incurred over the past couple of years some significant costs for needed facilities adjustments in order to protect student safety. So for those of you who have children at the H-Low of Day, when you go to the school, you notice we have additional security cameras at the entrance. We have a second containment period, so when you're buzzing into the school, you don't get direct access right into the school. Those are updates and things that we made technically of our students and of our staff. So the picture got better. From 2014 to 2020, the town was able to support the schools at a reasonable appropriation and level. We had increases that ranged from 3.99 percent, 3.65 percent, up to 4.7 percent. So we consider those to be the rebuilding years. And our focus during those budget cycles has been to try to bring back positions that have been eliminated, to restore and enrich programs, and to rebuild. Our current status at this point, we have restored the classroom teaching positions that were cut during the recession years, and we've also restored our instructional support positions. We were also able to add to the budget some minimal funds for new curriculum adoption, for updating curriculum materials and programs, and remaining current. We have only partially restored our health education program, so we used to have regular health education classes. Right now, our students have physical education twice a week, and two out of every eighth classes is dedicated to health education. So that's partially been restored. Our technology staff, we've also just partially restored. We used to have a full-time technology director and a full-time district data specialist. We've reduced both of those to 0.5 positions and merged them into one, but we haven't been able to bring them back. Again, back in 2000, in the early 2000s, 2008, 2009, we had full-time librarians in each elementary building and a full-time library assistant in each building. We have not been able to bring that back. We currently have a 0.8 librarian in each building, and we have one library, part-time library assistant at Freeman Kennedy. We were able during those years to eliminate fees that the district had to add during the recession for transportation, as well as eliminate the tuition charge for full-day Things that we have that are still pending, we have for a long time, during that period of time, we had to add fees for participating in the band program. We have wanted for many years to eliminate those fees. We would like the band program to be universally accessible to all children at no cost, but we have not been able to do that yet. We also have not been able to bring back or restore the foreign language program. We have clerical positions that were reduced, so we reduced a clerical position at Freeman Kennedy Office, as well as our business and HR office. We don't have any clerical support in the business office at this time, but we have not been able to address those reductions or restore them. We also have a special education team chair position. That's the person who runs all of our IEP meetings, communicates with parents, coordinates testing. That position was reduced last year by 0.2. We have not brought it back yet. We're hoping in this budget to partially restore that. And the enrichment program and the enrichment teacher that we used to have was eliminated, and that has also not been restored as of yet. So if you look at those 13 years, and you look at the average cost increase or the average overall budget increase, it equates to 2.25 percent. And I think that's really important to know. So when you're looking at 2.25 percent, and I mentioned earlier, typically takes 2.5 to 3 to level funds, that is why those cuts that went so deep during those recession years, we haven't been able to fully address. It's a slow process in bringing things back once they've been eliminated. This chart just shows you what the average per pupil spending is for Norfolk compared to the state. So this data is all available, if anybody is interested, on the Mass Department of Education website. You can look up district per pupil costs, you can look at all the comparison data. We are required at the end of the year to complete an audit. The Department of Ed takes all of that information, looks at what the operating budget is, what portion of town funds, and includes any state revenue and grant funding, and then they divide that by your enrollment to determine your per pupil cost. We typically have been about $1,000 below the state average per pupil cost. You can see in 2015 and 2016, we got a little bit closer to closing that budget gap, but since 2016, you've seen steady growth in our enrollment. So that enrollment growth has perpetuated the gap growing again. Currently, we spend $1,033 less than this average community in Massachusetts per pupil. This just gives you a comparison. So the Department of Ed identifies for every district, comparison districts that you can look at when you're comparing your achievement data, your budget data, your attendance rates, anything like that. The comparison districts that they identify are supposed to be similar structurally. So these are all districts that do not have a high school. Some are K-6, some are K-8, and they're also similar demographically. If you look at Norfolk per pupil spending in relation to those comparison districts, you'll see in 2016, we were in the bottom third of those comparison districts in our per pupil cost. As I mentioned, 17, 18, and 18, 19, because our enrollment has increased, that number has gone down. So we are currently the lowest per pupil spending, with the exception of Berkeley Public Schools, in that comparison group. We spend about $600 less per pupil than Rentham, and about $1,600 less per pupil than Plainville. This is all too in your package if you need to go back. So when you think we spend $1,033 on average less per pupil, and you look at our total enrollment of 990 students, we spend in Norfolk, on average, a million dollars less than comparison communities to educate our children. Moving on, I'm going to talk a little bit about our 2020 budget requests and what our big budget drivers are. So right now, the 2020 request for the Norfolk Public Schools reflects an increase of 4.4 percent, which equates to about $560. What that budget request would allow us to do is to maintain level services, so same teaching class size ratio, same number of teachers, same program. It also allows us to meet contractual obligations for salary increases, steps and lane changes for our teaching staff, and a 2 percent COLA for non-union staff. So for us, the non-union staff would be our food service workers, our facilities and maintenance staff, our after-school program employees. We did before determining what to set that COLA at, we looked at what we spend on those positions compared to other districts in the area. Many of you may be seeing this in other aspects of your life, but we're struggling to fill those positions. We've had a lot of food service positions open, and we're struggling to get good qualified candidates in. We are, same with substitutes, so if anybody's interested in substitutes, you can see me after this meeting, because we have a shortage of substitutes. But we wanted to make sure that we had the COLA commensurate with what other districts were doing, because we can't afford to lose candidates to Plainville, KP, and other districts when we're struggling to fill those positions. I'm sorry? Cost of living adjustment. The other thing that we're looking to do is we need to add a classroom teacher and a paraprofessional to accommodate the increasing enrollment rate in kindergarten. So we currently have 149 students registered for kindergarten next year. Last year at this time, we had 121. So we are up by 28 students. Our class, maximum class size policy, the school committee established, is 21 students per class in kindergarten. So with the current enrollment, we already need an eighth kindergarten class. Additionally, what we looked at was the trend data for the past five years. Typically, between the time kindergarten registration starts to dwindle down, which is the end of February, and the time we open in September, we pick up an additional 10 percent of students. So last year at this time, we had 121 students. We opened our doors September 1st with 133. And that's people that are moving into town, people that weren't aware they had to register for kindergarten. So all of that changed generally, that's an increase of another 10 percent. So we are expecting over 160 students in kindergarten next year. We are also looking to add a 0.6 special education teacher to the Freeman Kennedy School. And the reason for this programming, we have a substantially separate program at the lower elementary school, at the H-Low of Day School, that serves the needs of students that have global developmental delays. We are very proud in Norfolk that we maintain almost all of our students in district. We keep our students in their home school with their neighborhood friends. There's a cost savings impact to that for the town and the district, but it's also ethically the school community's commitment to keep kids in their home school. So we have several students in that lower elementary program that are aging up. We don't have a receiving program at Freeman. We haven't had the need in the past, so we have to build a program so that we can continue to educate those students in district. And the last thing that's included in our budget request is we have currently 0.5 assistant principals at each building. The other 0.5 of their position, their curriculum director, they're here tonight. So we have one that focuses on math and science instruction, and the other on ELA and social studies. Those positions have really changed over the last five to six years for several reasons. One, the state has issued new curriculum frameworks. In 2016, for science and technology, 2017, they revised ELA and mathematics, and in 2018, we have brand-new social studies frameworks. Whenever there's new frameworks, we have to evaluate our curriculum, we have to look for new materials, we have to purchase materials, we have to provide professional development support for teachers. So the curriculum piece of those roles has become very, very demanding. Additionally, the state has passed several new regulations around anti-bullying laws, around student discipline, around physical restraint in schools, all of which have a significant recording requirement and place a demand on that plan. So we're looking to make those full-time positions in order to allow them to effectively support students, as well as their families. So what I typically do for the public again is to give you a sense of everything that has changed in the 2020 budget, in the 2021 budget request from last year. So this shows you all of the salary changes included in this budget, and it also shows you the reason for those salary changes to the right. So we have an increase of about $326,000 for the contractual steps and lanes and cost of living increase for the teachers and our professional staff. All of our other staff, as I mentioned before, a 2 percent cost of living increase, as well as their steps. We have the budget position for the classroom teacher for kindergarten, H-Low of Day, and the kindergarten assistant. Those are enrollment-driven. The assistant principals, also, that add is there, and that's also driven a lot by our enrollment and our increase in programming. The 0.6 special education teacher I mentioned at the Freeman Kennedy. We are looking to increase the occupational therapists up here that provide services to students with developmental delays. Because we have new students coming up, we need more time in order to provide those services. So we're only looking for a 0.1, which is a half-day increase for that position. We would like to restore 0.1 of the special ed team chair position that was cut last year. Our special ed population has grown from 14 percent to 18 percent. It's a lot more meeting time, and we need increased time in order to accommodate that. We are also going to be reducing a 1.0 special education paraprofessional position in order to try to offset some of those cost increases. So the total net change for salaries is about $600,000. On the expense side, we were able to create some cost savings, so there's a negative net for that. We have to replace our administrators' laptops and computers equipment. We generally look for a six-year cycle. We're now on seven years, so they're not functional, and they need to be upgraded. So we have 4,400 in for upgrading administrative technology. There's a $29,000 increase for network technology. We have, as a district, a comprehensive five-year technology replacement plan. So we have inventoried every piece of equipment that we own within the district, looked at its expected life expectancy, what needs to be replaced and upgraded over time. Next year, what we need to do is the security cameras throughout Freeman Kennedy School are now over 10 years old. We need to upgrade several of those, and there's new software to make them run efficiently on the new platform. So there's that piece. We also have, for those of you who might be on Wi-Fi tonight, we have AP devices throughout the Freeman and the H-Low of Day that are also aging out, that need to be replaced, so that we can maintain our Wi-Fi access. And we also have some funding in that budgeted. We have a server room at the H-Low of Day that is in a technology office space. We need to enclose that server in order to convert that space to be an instructional space. As we get further in the presentation, I'll share with you, we are currently out of classroom space at the H-Low of Day. We need two additional classrooms next year, which we do not have. So by creating, converting the technology office into an instructional space, we can relocate other support staff and try to clear up one classroom. We will have to figure out a plan for how we're going to house that for the additional The H-Low of Day expense budget's up by about $9,000. That is strictly to furnish a new kindergarten classroom. We need desks, chairs, books, and materials for those new students. FK services and supplies is down next year. Even though the cost of all of our supplies has gone up, we made some cuts where we could in order to generate some savings, so that's down by about 400. Special ed services is up by $36,000. That is to meet the needs of students IEPs. The service line refers generally to medical therapeutic services, consultation that we might have from a vision specialist or a hearing specialist, ABA home-based, applied behavior analysis, home-based services, things like that. So that's some of the contractual requirements we have for special education. We were able to reduce our special education tuitions and transportations combined by $120,000 for next year. The $15,000 increase for transportation reflects the contract that we have with Holmes to provide busing for all of our children. That's, we're in the third year of that contract, and it requires a $15,000 increase. The bottom two are just minor increases. We have been running short in the professional development budget allocation. We have a lot of required training that we need to do. We've been running over each year, so we're adjusting that just by $200 so that we can meet those requirements. And facilities, we have increased cost of custodial supplies. As everybody is probably well aware, we are comprehensively spraying the schools right now to prevent the spread of any kind of infectious disease. All of those materials combined have an increased cost of $2,400. So overall expenses are down close to $50,000. If you look at the budget increase breakdown by budget driver, 3.23 percent of our overall 4.4 increase is contractual. So that would be the transportation contract and our steps and lanes and salary. 1.5 percent is driven strictly by the increase in enrollment for kindergarten, and then 0.09 percent is other, and that's primarily the technology spending I discussed. And then we are overall down in special education costs. Just a breakdown of the school budget as a whole, so that you kind of know how all the dollars are allocated. 69 percent of our total budget goes to fund professional salaries, which is teachers and administrators. 4 percent clerical salaries, 14 percent other salaries, so that's maintenance, technology, food service. 8 percent is services. The bulk of that 8 percent is the transportation contract. That's a contracted service. Then we have only 3 percent of the total budget is for all of the supplies and materials, curriculum, workbooks, all of that. And then we have 1 percent that is for other fixed costs, so that would be if you have staff retired, there's sick leave buyback, things like that that are required by contract. And we have only 1 percent of our budget that goes to added district tuition. That is a really low number when you compare other districts to cost and generate significant savings every year for the town. Class size projections. So every year, when we're looking at how many teachers we need at each grade level, we look at what the school committee policy says for the maximum level of class size, and we move teachers as needed to match the enrollment demands. Next year, we anticipate we are going to need eight sessions of kindergarten, so we will be up by one teacher next year. We expect 160 students with an average class size of 20. First grade, we expect we'll continue to need seven sessions there. We have 133 students currently enrolled. We do still pick up new enrollment, but we base the, all grades other than kindergarten, based on our current enrollment of the class coming in. So that would leave a class size of 19 for first grade. We expect to have to go up to seven second grades next year. With 128 students enrolled, that'll be a class size of 18. Grade three, we are going down a class. 117 students, the average class size would be 19.5. Grade four will stay at seven, with a class size of 19. Grade five will need to increase. That's a bubble year for us. We have the highest enrollment going into grade five, 153 students. So with the additional seven, the class size will stay at 21.9. And we are decreasing the sixth grade. That'll go down to five classes, and that'll be the highest class size we have in the district next year at 23.2. The net increase will be one full-time classroom teacher, and again, that's based on our current registration and enrollment. This just shows you against those same comparison communities how our class size compares. So in 2016, between Norfolk and Berkeley, we were on the higher end of all of the comparison community class size. That was pretty much true in 17 and 18. We're slightly better this year. We're closer to the middle of the pack with the 4.4 percent increase. If we add that additional K teacher, I expect that we will remain at a class size average of 20. Cost savings. So again, we do recognize the town has limited revenues to support all department budgets, so we really look carefully at ways that we can generate cost savings annually. This is just a highlight of some of the things that we did in preparation for next year's fiscal 2021 budget. For the past several years, we have shared a facilities director and a deputy director with the town, as well as an HVAC and a maintenance position salary. In doing that, we save $60,000 annually off the operating costs for the district. We also, last year, developed a shared custodial position, and we staggered the work week, so that person works Tuesday through Saturday, and that led to a $5,000 decrease in overtime. This is one of the ones I'm proud of. So we had budgeted next year $7,500 to replace furniture in the H-Low of Day library. The H-Low of Day is now 26 years old, and the furniture in the library is original to the building. I'm checking with Ms. Balfour, because she has a historic memory like no other. So, original to the building. So the chairs and tables were 26 years old. They were hired, they were showing their wear. But when you look to replace the furniture, the cost for that kind of furniture is very high, and the quality is significantly lower than what you used to get. So over the December break, our custodial staff stripped all the tables, they re-laminated them all, they revarnished the tables, and we were able to save that $7,500 off the top of what we budgeted for the replacement for next year. And they're beautiful, so go see them. The other thing that we're looking at, as I mentioned, we have to enclose the server in order to create an instructional space for next year. We got some quotes in having a company come in to do that. The cost was significant. We are going to, we've been working with the building department to do that in-house. If we're able to do that in-house, we will save $12,000. We also have been cost-sharing professional development with Rentham, Plainville, and Team Philip. By cost-sharing, the cost of the presenters and those mandated programs, we save $20,000 a year. Our tech director and business office worked really hard to renegotiate all the copier-printer contracts for the district, and that will reduce contracts for the district, and that will reduce expenses there $20,000 next year. Again, building that in-house program for special education at Freeman Kennedy will save us $230,000 in added district costs. And every year, we work really hard on competitive grant writing. Last year, we partnered with King Philip, Ransom, and Plainville, and we wrote a $350,000 mental health grant. We've applied for that again. That funds a wellness coordinator and few social workers of the district, as well as parent programming. And we also wrote several professional development grants. So $150,000, $5,000 is what we're expecting to see next year in competitive grants. One thing that I really wanted to highlight, the investment, we all feel very strongly that students in Norfolk and children in Norfolk deserve a rigorous, high-quality education. At the same time, there's a real financial reason that the town needs to invest in education. We have two charter schools locally. The Benjamin Franklin Classical Charter in Franklin expanded their charter last year from 450 to 750 students, which means they can take an additional 300 students. We also have the Foxborough Legion Charter School that started 1,600 students right in Foxborough. If, these are public, considered public school options. They're cost-free for parents if parents choose to register in a charter school, then the funding that the town would receive, the state aid dollars, follows the child. So for every student that, from Norfolk that registers and attends a charter school, the town loses $15,000 in funds. So if we lose four students, we lose the equivalent of a teacher. Again, every year, we know there's limitations, so there's some staffing and expense things that we really need, but we're delaying at this time. We really need that additional special ed teacher at Freeman Kennedy to be a full-time position. We're only asking for .6 right now. We really need to restore that team chair position and have that be full-time. We're only asking for .1. As we add classes and enrollment grows, we're going to really have to think about adding .1 art and music and .2 physical education so that we can schedule those additional classes into those special programs. We would like to restore the librarians to full-time at each building, but we are not bringing that forward at this time. We have also worked really hard to infuse STEM, science, technology, and engineering into the classroom instruction. We have a .5 tech specialist at the H.L. of Day that we would really like to be full-time. We have wanted for a couple of years to increase our developmental math staff so that we can provide more intensive services to more students to support those that are struggling with math. We are not bringing that forward, and we are not able to, at this time, consider restoring world language. We also have some needs for additional staffing in the summer. The Freeman Kennedy now is used almost all summer by the rec department. It's really hard to get the building thoroughly cleaned and turned around in the short period of time that it's available, but we are not bringing that forward. And we are not, we still need to restore those clerical positions, but we are not asking for that in this budget. On the expense side, we would really like to add an additional day. Our paraprofessional staff works 182 days. That provides them one day of professional development, and then they're here for the opening meeting day. They support some of our students that are really struggling. We would like them to be able to attend all of the content, professional development that we provide for all of our teachers. We aren't able to do that right now. And if we were to fully fund the five-year technology replacement program, we would need to add $125,000 to the budget. We know that's not sustainable and not possible at this time, so we are delaying those costs. And now, the moment you've all been waiting for, return on investment. And I have to go up here to start the floor.
The Norfolk Public Schools provide a rigorous, high-quality education for all our students that supports them in mastering core academic skills and that helps them to develop their capacity for problem-solving, communication, critical thinking, and creativity. The town of Norfolk receives a strong return on its investment in educational dollars.
Our research-based curriculum and instructional programs are fully aligned with the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks and are designed to promote academic curiosity and student inquiry. Students in Norfolk regularly engage in reading challenging and meaningful texts across content areas, solving complex, real-world problems, and sharing their knowledge and insights through both speaking and writing.
Through our makerspace and integration of science and technology, we empower students to engage in design thinking and harness their curiosity and innovation to persevere through challenges and develop unique and novel solutions to meaningful problems.
We also recognize that learning and achievement are strongest when teachers have high-quality resources and materials, robust professional learning opportunities, and strong content knowledge. In Norfolk, the majority of our teachers have advanced degrees and over 10 years of teaching experience. We have a very low turnover of staff, and our teachers are able to build strong relationships with children and families. Norfolk also appreciates the importance of education in developing the whole child. Through outstanding music, arts, and wellness programs, we support children in developing creativity, critical thinking, and the knowledge and self-discipline necessary to make healthy life choices.
Our social-emotional learning programs, anti-bullying curriculum, and civic instructions encourage students' development of responsible citizenship. Establishing a strong sense of community and positive relationships between students, staff, and families is a critical part of our educational mission.
And now, we are going to all the students to join the committee and go ahead and discuss the comments.
Okay. So questions, comments, suggestions? Don't be shy, two mics, step up.
I have a question.
Okay, come on up to the mic.
So I'm just, I'm curious, what percentage of our tax rate is going to the money in the school? What percentage of our overall tax bill supports the school budget?
That actually, I will defer to a lot. I don't know the exact percentage. It is definitely the lion's share of it.
The town budget is roughly $35 million. 13, the ask for this next fiscal year is 13 million, so.
13 of 14?
13.3 million is the ask, and the town budget is roughly 35, so.
35 million?
41 million is proposed?
Or 41.
13 divided by 41? 32 percent, not quite a third.
So my question on that is, so you talked about the enrollment increasing every year. I think you jumped 30 students in kindergarten, thinking H.L. of Day here, 28 students. So do you factor in the additional revenue that comes in for those families? Because I'm assuming most of those families are probably coming into town or recently into town.
So it's not all, sometimes people are leaving the town selling a house that may not have kids, maybe even moving in with children. But there is a lot of development in new housing going up, so bringing students in. And that would be in terms of the new revenue to the town. That would be more of a town question.
So comparing the next year's budget right now, that you wrote $20,000, $2,000 of revenue. You did about $600,000. That is, if I was to correct me, the general budget, you're just putting any particular department of budget.
So then, like, roughly 1/3 of that would be seen by the school budget? Is that the next year? Is that the concept?
I guess you draw that comparison exactly.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Just real quick, we're going to sit. I think you missed this part. Just get your name and where you are.
Oh, sure. Anthony Mayo, in Norfolk. No, I'm at Fox Run Development. Thank you. Appreciate the comments.
Ryan Hartmeyer from Village Green. So I was quite shocked at seeing the numbers from during the recession in 2008 to 2013. So, you know, from 2008 to 2013, the budget actually went down, right? And that was really in two years there. So I guess me just kind of doing back-of-the-encvelope calculations on where the state has gone since that time, it's roughly a 3.3% per year increase that the state in that one plot that you showed there.
That's correct.
So now, what I'm seeing is we're at roughly 4% annual increase is what we've been hitting. Are we being aggressive enough for catching up for those previous years?
We are not. We have run some preliminary numbers, so even with a 4.4% increase because of the additional enrollment we have next year, we are not going, if the state maintains that 3.3%, we are not going to close that gap.
Exactly. And then when you factor in the new enrollment that's coming in on top of that, I think I feel like we need to be way more aggressive with funding.
Thank you.
Susan Klein, Keenypot Road. Just wanted to give some context and point of reference watching this. I'm fairly involved, and there were actually a lot of things that I wasn't aware of. I'm the volunteer coordinator for the town, and I will be retiring from that position. So if there's anyone younger here who would like to take that over, let me know. I've been doing it for 10 years. And one of the things that I can tell you is that back when we actually made paper copies, just to give you some understanding, which was, probably we stopped four years ago. When we were making paper copies to put into the backpacks, people with younger kids know the backpack flyers, I remember the number. It was 644 for both schools, including pre-K. So when you wanted to advertise a dance or the haunted train, for example, 644. 990 students next year. My son, who is a senior in high school now, was the largest class that Freeman Kennedy had seen, and I believe he was 116 students. And that was the largest class that had been seen here in years. And now, that seems to be the lowest class number. So the fact that we're talking about cutting a budget, which we're still trying to recover from, one of the other things I wanted to point out to you, which I have brought up with both principles, is that, sorry, I have a cold. Not the coronavirus, I swear. I promise. I have been, I am good. But one of the things that I wanted to bring up was, we have been asking, as the volunteer coordinators, for a library person. The librarians do not have assistants right now, and for the past, correct me if I'm wrong on this, they would probably know better, but Kristen O'Neill, who's a wonderful, wonderful woman, has been the volunteer, not paid, person in the library. And they relied on her to do basically what a paid person would do. She was in the library as just a volunteer mom probably every day. She did the schedule, she put the books away, she did a ton of stuff. Well, she is, like me, her kids have gotten older, and she was retired. There is no one who has stepped up to do that job, and the expectation is that it would be someone who would do what she did, and there isn't. So for right now, the library has been going understaffed all year. We can't get volunteers in, we, the librarians have no help because there isn't a parent who's willing to do it for free, and the school hasn't hired anyone. So I would actually like to implore you to please consider restoring those positions because, like I said, having done this job for a decade, we know what we're doing. The new person coming in is not going to have the experience that my partner and I have had. So you're going to see more and more drop-off in volunteer numbers because of that. And so I would like to make sure that you really consider getting, trying to restore some of those positions because they are necessary. They were necessary when we were at 644. They're especially necessary if we're at 990. So, trust me, I understand budgets. I want to try to save money, too. I don't like paying taxes. My tax rate is ridiculously high. I understand it, but there are certain places you can cut, and there's a way to streamline a budget, you know, and pick it apart without cutting things that are actually necessary. And also, one last note, sorry, I know I'm taking a long time. KP spends, oh God, I can't remember what it was last year. It was $600 to $1 million to send their students out of district because they don't have the special ed services to house them in district. So the fact that we only have 1% of our overall budget being sent out of district is a huge, huge accomplishment for Norfolk Schools. So just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Tony Santuri, 118 Gray Birch, and I'd like to compliment you on a very impressive presentation. There's a couple of quirks that I noticed, and you probably will pick it up, but the page that talks about the 1 million, I know you had it on the slide correct, but in here it says you saved $1 million for a student. So you're math. And I also comment on the 2.5%, the 2.25% increase. You know, if you pick the right years, you can get any number you want. I mean, the last, the last seven or eight years was 4%, but, you know.
I only included the recession year so you could give context to the recent funding.
But I've done this kind of work, so I know how you can play with the figures. I want to especially commend you on the cost savings. I was impressed that you've gone through all the effort to look at each of these line items and come up with about a half a million dollars in savings. I really give you guys a tip of the hat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Julie Redd, that's Montauk Ave. Similar to Susan Klein, I just wanted to say I've been around for a while now. I'm a junior in high school, junior freshman, and a sixth grader. So I'll be leaving the Norfolk system sadly after this year, but that doesn't mean that I, that I stop caring about it. So I came tonight to really promote and encourage everybody to, you know, whether you have children in the system or not, that good schools are the hallmark of a good town, and all of our property taxes are going to go down the drain if we stop investing in our schools. And I have to say, I've been very involved in the budgets over the years. I've been grossly involved in the budgets at King Philip and paid a lot of attention in Norfolk over the years. And Norfolk does, the Select Board has always done a very good job funding both the town and King Philip. Norfolk is, always comes through funding for KP, which I can't say the same about the other towns in the district always. And the school administration does a tremendous job with these, like, if you've seen other budget presentations, as the gentleman was just saying, these are great presentations, and they really show where our dollars are going and how much thought is going into, they're not willy-nilly spending our money. They're really thinking about it and where they can save money and where the dollars need to go. So I really appreciate that. And I was around during the hard years, and I saw all the cuts that my older children, all the programs that were here that they lost, that my older children didn't take advantage of. And I've been really appreciative of the methodical way that Dr. Alardi and both school administrations have added back little bit by little bit to make sure that we can maintain supporting those operational expenses without adding it all back and then having to let it go and just very thoughtfully adding it back. So, you know, Norfolk has a really solid school system, and as you can see, there's still places that we'd like to go with it, and I'd like to keep going in that direction. And so I have not, I am guilty of not following the selectmen's meetings recently besides hearing about them on Facebook. And so I would love to hear from the select people tonight, and I'm hoping to hear that we're going to be able to do our best to fund the budget because we don't need our schools going down or losing functionality. We need to keep that upward trend. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Cece Van Tine, Love and Wright Farm Road. Just a couple of observational points, and in no particular order, I'm going to echo what Julie said a couple of years ago, and it was really more involved with the funding of the school that we're in right now. But the point resonates when, I remember doing a town meeting when I was moderator in the old school, and there's pieces of it falling down the building, which was awful. And at that point, we had competing interests, right? You have the people who are on a fixed income for whom willy-nilly saying things like, "Let's just throw more money at it," is terrifying because they want to stay here. But the reality is, if we had left that school... You have the people who are on a fixed income for whom willy nilly saying things like, let's just throw more money at it is terrifying because they want to stay here. But the reality is if we had left that school in place, we would have lost people and we would have lost revenue. And to Julie's point, sometimes you really do have to spend money to make money. And in this instance, the thing that's most important to people who are shopping for a town is the school system. And I'm mindful of, you don't want to have your students sort of drawn away to charter schools. But more importantly is if I'm trying to decide between six towns that are an hour on, by a train away from Boston and I look at what Norfolk can offer versus what surrounding communities can offer, I'm going to pick Norfolk. So for that reason, I think that it's an incredibly important part of the budget. Secondarily, and it wasn't in your piece tonight, but it was in your piece that you had in front of us a couple of weeks ago. I think one of the things that people don't realize, uh, and so I'm going to echo now and I'll keep echoing, is how lean you guys run. If you look at your numbers compared to surrounding communities' numbers, competing towns' numbers, higher brow towns' numbers, lower brow towns' numbers, educationally, not in any sort of social strata. You run incredibly lean, like many, many dollars leaner, and that's impressive. I understand why we can't in any given year throw everything back in. To Julie's point, if there's another recession, we have to pull everything back out. And I really appreciate you being mindful of the fact that not everybody has the ability to say, well, I can afford it. So choose everybody else. But ultimately I do think that without a budget like this one, with everything that you have in it, people are going to go to other towns. Our real estate isn't going to sell. And we're not going to have the revenue and our taxes are going to go up. So I, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Diane Pyburn, Quill Run Road. Um, I have a quick question about the growth. So I understand the budgets for two thousand twenty-one and, and talking about that. But looking at the growth, and you said that you have room for one more class, but you'll need two. Okay. And then in two thousand twenty-three, you'll have a hundred and seventy-four kids. So at what point, what's the plan then and how do we support that? My kids enter the class in two thousand twenty-one and I have four of them, so I'm concerned.
So the presentation, um, that Stan was referring to, we did a presentation to the select board a, um, a couple months ago. We are pursuing, um, and considering an expansion project. Um, and we'll be going actually tomorrow night to talk about, um, about the board voting to allow us to apply to the national school building authority for expansion at the Freeman Kennedy School. Um, to accommodate what we're expecting. We're out of state that is out of state now. Um, but as that new enrollment rolls up, we'll be out of state next year. So we have proposed an expansion project that was connected to main to Freeman Kennedy School. Um, and we would be relocating our preschool programs to the Freeman Kennedy. It would have a separate entrance and maybe opening new classrooms upstairs. That move opens up classrooms that can be held today. So in that one expansion project, we'll create spaces to have physical buildings.
And then the teachers to be in those classrooms?
That will, yes, we will have to fund that. And hopefully as, as new families move in and new development happens, there will be additional.
Right. But at some point you run out of land. Right? Land. You're not always going to have new developments coming in.
We believe based on the projections that we've had done, this expansion project will meet the growth demands of the town for the next few years. It would accommodate nine classrooms upstairs and nine downstairs. So it's a pretty good sized classroom.
Right. But then it's just the people to support that, like the staffing that you would need. And that's going to impact the budget across all sectors.
And it will happen slowly over time as you expand that.
Thank you.
I didn't know how to adjust these, so I know they're high for people. I'm a little short. I'm Katie Young, Lafayette Lane. And I want to commend you on what an amazing school system you have with such a lean budget. Um, I just moved to Norfolk three years ago. I'm an educator myself. And one of the things that really, um, surprised me about a town like Norfolk was that we did not have full-time curriculum, um, directors. Um, it's, it's very common in most school systems and it's critical. One of our four, um, visions is to inspire and inspired teachers inspire students. If we, I, I know that there's only so much money this year. And I think it's critical that you included the deficits in the past when you were talking about the budget because those are things that were lost. So adding a little bit is, is only filling that hole. So I, even though it's two point two five over many years, that's not a lot. And I feel like as much as I hate paying my taxes as much as everybody else, if we want our schools to continue competing with other school systems around here that are really high quality school systems, we need to make sure that we keep up with the curriculum. A curriculum director's job is so critical. They're, they're, um, I'm not a curriculum director myself, but I'm in education. And their role is to really coach and inspire and learn new things that are really happening and working i- in each of the, um, content areas. And I would love to see Norfolk eventually get one, if not two, full-time curriculum directors because it's such an important role. So I know it can't be done this year, but please consider it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Allison Colanay and I'm on Berkshire Street. And I just wanted to, um, re-echo Cece's point, um, which was, I know, an echo. But I think it's because it's a very important echo. Um, my husband and I just moved to the town in June of the summer and we spent a lot of time researching where we wanted to be, a lot of time. I toured H L Day before we put in an offer on a house because education meant, and a lot to me and my family. We have two young children and as you can see by the numbers, the future of this town is these young families. So I think it is incredibly important that we put more money into the school system. And to echo everyone's point, we've been so happy with the education my children have received here. It's been amazing. But being able to give even more resources to that would bring back even more return on that investment. And I think it's incredibly important for the value of our homes, for the value of this town, um, to continue to invest in that and invest heavily and realize the importance of that. Or I think it will impact where we're going.
Thank you.
Hi, Chris, this is the, um, I'm Julie. Um, and first, I want to, I mean, I've been spending a lot of time on the call, but I have to hear a quick question. And really, Meg, you're out of business costs, you know, a lot of times, that is incredible. Um, I do personally work in this school budget and work on budgets myself. And this is a very, very lean budget. Um, it's great for those of us who want to not spend money on taxes. But to be quite honest, the budget is still lean compared to what other things they're asking for. Um, and just to sort of speak for some of the special education families, that is my passion. You're asking for a point six special educator for a program to move up. Um, I don't know if you can answer this, but how do you intend on managing a classroom of students in eight, two or three, over just a point six special educator?
Thank you for the question and I can clarify that. So we are going to have to reallocate services that we're providing with other special education teachers that, uh, currently in order to move some time and create, so the receiving program will be a full-time position. But we have to reallocate current staffing and so we're only asking for a point six in order to do that. Yes, absolutely. Yep. But we have to reallocate and that's why we would really like a full-time position. Um, but we're going to re- reallocate service delivery, re-shuffle staffing in order to create with a point six, a full-time position. Sure.
Thank you. One more question for me.
Sure.
Ryan at the Village Green. So, um, you've heard this a few times about where, I think everyone's very impressed by how lean the budget is. My, my, my worry is that that's not sustainable, right? So it's probably a bit more of a comment to the selectmen that I think that, you know, that we're, you saw that in the projections that were roughly a million dollars, uh, less than our competitors. Um, that is not right. Um, I think that we need to be, um, much more aggressive with our funding for the schools. There was a comment earlier about what percentage of our revenue is devoted to the school districts, um, or to the school funding. I would actually like to see what, how that compares to the other schools, uh, to the other towns. Uh, are we investing enough into our schools right now as a percentage of our, of our income? I fear that we're not. Thank you.
Hi, Robin Cadding. I'm at Stop River. And I'm so glad I got to follow this gentleman because I was going to come up and, uh, say the same thing. I, I'm a school psychologist. My profession, I, I trained school psychologists. So I understand the importance of education and the school system. Um, I concur. I think that we are not putting enough in, investments and money into our system. I, like the other woman, uh, who just spoke, I'm brand new to this system. I ended up here accidentally, uh, is what I would say, um, because of the school system and in particular because of the special education services that my children do need. So, um, it's for me, it's, it's a very big issue. And I agree that it also affects our property values, which are actually really pretty expensive here now. Um, if you have bought in the last year. Um, and so I think, uh, my concern was looking at that per pupil spending. I, I previously, I moved from out of state, but I previously lived here and we did not go back to our former town because the town was not investing in their schools. Um, my little tiny one, who is not yet in school, would have been in a trailer because they didn't invest in having a school. So, um, for me, this is, is a big deal that we actually, again, as the gentleman said, uh, invest more in this system going forward.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Wanted to add a postscript. Um, one of the things that I think maybe you should add to this presentation is the performance, the academic performance of your students. I mean, that's, that's the, a measure of the effectiveness of the school system. And I don't know how you do it, whether you have MCAS or others, but I, I would assume that our students are above average.
We're in the top eighteen percent of the state. I typically do include the MCAS in the town's presentation, but that's a good point. I can, I can definitely add that. Thank you.
Definitely. Thank you. Yes.
Hi, Lindsay Seamus, Robin Road. Uh, so I'm just looking again at the Norfolk versus the state per pupil spending. And curious, I think we're all in agreement that we're in a great town and we are all really committed to the town sustaining its property values and the school being a huge component of that. I'm just a little, um, curious as to why we're not specific to this chart, why we're not trying to be at the state average or above and kind of using that as our benchmark for our standard. And, and I can respond. Does somebody else want to jump in or?
Well, it has to do with the process, maybe, you know, Blythe and, and you talked about the process of, the collaborative process of understanding what the town can afford at the very beginning part of the budget planning season. And those, you know, the messaging that takes place is, you know, we think that, you know, there's a corridor of what each of the major departments within the town can afford. We start to develop based on those assumptions. Uh, in my time on the board, uh, we have, you know, had a very good relationship with the town administrator and the select board to understand what those numbers are and try to come in and do our part as one of the many players in town developing budgets. Do our part to, um, you know, come in where we need to. So the town can afford the asks from everybody else. So it's, it's not just us saying, you know, we, we want to catch up to that red line and, and ask for seven or eight or nine percent three years in a row. It's really what can the town afford because it's not just about the schools. Schools are definitely important. We're one-third of what's going on here. But, you know, the police, fire, facilities, roads, you name it, it's, they all need something as well. It's hard to give up on any one of those departments for any period of time because you, you can see what happened to the schools and we did have to cut. It's a long road to get back to where you need to be.
And I would also add to that, that, um, because Norfolk doesn't have a lot of money and has limited tax revenue, um, the town doesn't expect to, to see significant new revenue this year. I think that the total six, seven hundred dollars of new revenue that is available for all departments.
Six hundred thousand.
And we're asking for five hundred and seventeen of it. So, um, you know, we've realized that there, there is a limited funding and we would love, I mean, our, I think all of our goal is to try to close that gap, is to bring things back. Um, I do think we provide a really high quality program right now. We've always got a lower cost. Our goal is to suppose that that can bring some programming back. Um, but with only six hundred thousand available, these buyers have contracted, they have to absorb, um, those other departments. So we try to work with the town to come up with a reasonable ask. So thank you. Thank you.
Anthony Fox Run. Um, I just have one quick question on the art and music. Uh, so it said, you said there's two new classes coming in to H L Day, right?
Yep.
And you said you have an unfunded or additional art and music teacher? What, what is the plan there? Will all the kids still get?
All of the kids will still get art. What we're, what challenges right now, because as we add a classroom, we have to add another class that are current art schedules. So we have, in order to be physically responsible, we have the art teachers from here running down to teach one class that we taught, and then running back up here to teach the rest of the classes. So we're covering it, but it is not ideal to have six kindergarten classes have one art teacher and then seventh has a different art teacher and there's no time for collaboration. Um, we're stretched thin right now. Um, it's going to be tough to absorb that additional class. We won't have any, any time anywhere. Um, and that's a challenge. If it grows beyond that one class, we have to add those, those additional.
Got it. Okay. So there is coverage.
Yeah, but we will make sure that everybody has an art view of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. People keep switching sides.
I didn't want to stand behind him. Sorry, Susan, um, Klein, Keenly Pond Road. Again, this is actually a question, was before I was more commentary. Um, I know that a few years back, and, and everybody loves saving money. Every, I, when it first happened, I was like, ooh, no bus fees anymore. But in theory, what are the cost savings per year for not having a bus fee?
So that's a really good question. So the state law allows districts to charge a transportation fee for students that live within two miles of the school. Total, what we were making, bringing in for transportation fees was about seventy thousand dollars. However, um, in speaking with district legal counsel and looking at that, the intent of the state law that allows you to charge a fee for students that live within two miles is that there's a safe rocking route to school for those children. We do not have that. We don't have sidewalks. We do not have crossing guards as many towns do. So to implement that fee, uh, from a legal perspective is somewhat inequitable because we're not following the, the basic assumption. Um, and again, that's new learning as towns have put these fees in place and, and things are litigated, that the intent of the law came into question.
There are still a lot of towns charging bus fees though, correct?
Right. But most have sidewalks and most have crossing guards.
All right. So that one didn't work out cost-wise the way I wanted it to.
I tried that one in the budget.
The gist of my question is, what I'm, what I'm trying to get at is, everybody, everyone, I shouldn't say everyone, most people who live in town want a streamlined budget. And, and, and though I do see that we are fall below schools like Dover for our cost per student, we also fall below Dover for our property taxes. So they go hand in hand unfortunately. So they're not always apples to apples to compare us to towns, you know? Um, with that said, I guess what I'm trying to get at is not for the, the level service plan that you're asking for, not for that, but to help offset, to increase, to restore to stuff, sorry, I have a cold. I'm not jumbling my words. I'm usually much. To restore some of the programs that were cut. Um, for example, you know, I think it's absolutely absurd that our principals aren't full time. I mean, our, our assistant principal's not full time. I didn't even know that. And I consider myself pretty involved. Um, to restore some of these programs, is there, oh, I guess what I'm trying to say, is there a way that as the parents of kids are in school, we want to say, oh, I want to save money wherever I can. I don't want to pay a bus fee. I don't want to pay for kindergarten. I don't want to pay for band. I don't want to pay for extracurricular activities. But is there a way that we could just sort of appease the town, to sort of help with the, with the generational gap that we have in this town where there's certain residents who, who don't have kids in school anymore and say things like, well, I don't have kids in school, so I don't want to pay for that. With the parents who have kids in school, who want our schools to be funded, is there a way that we can, obviously your budget's done for this year, but is there a way in, for next year to sort of restore some of these programs in addition to the level service plan that, I'm not saying charge the parents, but charge, so that the people that are u- using fees to generate some of this income, so that you can say to help get us back to it, it's directly, it's the people who are directly benefiting it are also the ones who are directly paying for it. Not, not for the budget and the level service plan entirely, not what I mean. Um, like a bus, okay, the bus fee didn't work out. But for example, a bus fee or full day kindergarten or non, you know, regulated preschool. I know some, there's been a lot of talk about making preschool free, but only kids with special needs right now are getting preschool for free. So instead of having those things coming out of the budget, keeping those in to generate some income to help offset so that we can restore these things at a faster rate. And I'm, I'm simply speaking of the three hundred thousand. I'm not speaking to the twelve million dollars, obviously. I'm speaking at a very low number, like band fees, things like that. That was my question. If that's a possibility.
It sort of helps balance what the needs of everyone in the town are. No, I think it's a really good question. And again, for the transportation fees, we eliminated those based on the legal aspect of that. As far as full-day kindergarten, most districts, at this point, eighty-five percent of districts offer free kindergarten across the Commonwealth and the, both of those schools, the charter schools, have free kindergarten. So if we were to impose a fee and then families chose the free option, then we lose funding and typically if you lose a kid at kindergarten, they stay. They make friends, they get connected. So if we lose a kid at kindergarten to a charter school and they stay through sixth grade, that's fifteen thousand dollars every year that the town is losing in revenue for that. And it also will impact your real estate market because every other community around here has free kindergarten options, so. But what we've been doing, I do hear what you're saying and we want to keep the schools, we have to provide free and appropriate public education. What we've been trying to do to mitigate some of those and bring some of those things back is to aggressively pursue competitive grant funding. And we've talked with King Philip and the region about a shared grant writing position. So the grant that we wrote last year for the Director of Wellness, that person has written over two hundred thousand dollars in grants to bring in additional programs for wellness and for student health. So that's how we're approaching it right now, to try to address some of these costs. We can certainly give some additional consideration.
From my own personal point of view, in a perfect world, I would say, let's fund our schools to the best of our ability.
I guess.
But as, and some of you know that I also serve on the advisory committee, so I hear a lot of feedback from people who honestly don't have kids in school and they don't want to pay for it. And there's a balancing act when you go to town meeting to try to make sure that you're appeasing the percentage of people who come to vote who have kids in school and the percentage of people who come to vote who don't. Last, on a separate thing, is if I can, this is a very well-intended meeting and again, as I said, we don't have to say this, but I'm on advisory, I'm also on the V one committee. We might get one person at our meeting, one, but there's a hundred people commenting on Facebook about what they don't want in the V one district, what they do want in the V one district, and what they don't want to see at town meeting, and what they don't want to see at town meeting. So all I can say is, thank you for coming tonight and if I could, all of our meetings are posted, they're all public, please show up because if you're not there and your voice isn't heard, you're relying on, unfortunately, you're relying on me. I mean, me and the seven other people who are on advisory board, because that's what our job is, is to look and say, hey, what does everybody in town want? Guess at it and then advise you at town meeting on that. We can't always guess. So if I could ask you to make sure you come to select board meeting. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Katie Young, Lafayette Lane, again. Just to play devil's advocate to Susan, I know you're representing people when you talk about people who don't have children in the district anymore, saying, you know, why am I paying all this for somebody else's kid? But I think it's important that we remember that if they do have children, when their children were in school, other people paid for their tax, paid with their taxes for their schools too. And that's part of what is, that is what draws people to a town like this. I came, like I said, three years ago, the number one reason we left our old town was for the schools and we came here because I knew what a great town Norfolk is. And I just feel like, as a community, our taxes can't be, well, I only use this road, so therefore I only want this road paid and I only use the schools, or I don't use the schools anymore, so I don't want to pay for it. I just, I really hesitate, it really upsets me to hear that line of thinking because that's not what a community is all about. The part that I want to play devil's advocate is about, and I think Ingrid, you already did speak about it, funding or charging for full-day kindergarten. Not only would we lose students, but kindergarten is so critical, elementary school teacher is so critical of their, of children's success and starting with the foundation and with the new Common Core standards that you hear about, which are rigorous and really they were formed mostly on Massachusetts standards anyway, I know they get a bad rap, but Common Core standards are rigorous and we are preparing our children so well for the 21st century. If we, if we start limiting what we give to kindergarten because they're the youngest, we are putting ourselves in so much risk, it's such a disservice to our students. We already see students who don't go to preschool coming up to kindergarten with a huge gap. And so if we were to start first grade with that huge gap, then the amount of developmental and support services we need would be exponentially higher than they are now. So I just want to urge you and everybody to always consider how critical it is that we fund kindergarten and that all of our budgets really take into account the foundation that we're setting in the early grades.
Thank you.
Good evening. Kevin Calcutt, I live in Canterbury, Layton. First off, I want to show my appreciation. I'll echo my much more articulate associate's word in saying, we can't begin to express how much we appreciate the work that you put into this budget, the efforts that you do to maintain a lower budget and to find savings wherever you can. It's really apparent in what you presented tonight and we really do appreciate it. I'm here with two hats on tonight. You know, one is as a parent of a seven-year-old, a five-year-old and a two-year-old. The seven-year-old, which you had prominently in the front of the video, which was-
Oh, really?
-a great touch, nicely done.
Oh, that couldn't be more strategic. I didn't even know that.
So the importance of education-
He was called a shop-in after.
Beautifully done.
Yeah.
The importance of education is paramount for us, right? That's something that we're highly invested in, in this town, and we're going to be putting a weight on you four for the next fifteen years or so, so we do appreciate that. But as a select board member, we also have the responsibility of representing the interests of more than just the school community, more than just people who are invested in what's going on with our education system. So as we go through the process of balancing those expectations, those needs and what people are looking for in terms of expectations and what they want to see happen in terms of the future of the community, we have to balance those. And I do want to emphasize the point that what you've done here tonight, what you've presented to us, what you've put together, really helps us to be able to bring all that together and meet those expectations for the greater community. So thank you all very much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
C.C. Van Tyne, Wright Farm Road, I'll be, I'll attempt to be brief, I'll be brief. I just wanted to echo Susan to the other person's point that she was upset to hear that there would be people who would consider that they don't want to spend money on the school because they don't have children in the school. Yeah, I mean, those people exist, right? We were at town meeting where someone got up and said, I literally said, right, I don't have kids in this school, I don't care about it. And we're like, whoa, oh, guy. But I think he's like an anathema, right? But if you put him to the side, what Susan's saying is right, there's, there are compete, everybody's part of a community, but there are competing interests for a small pot of money. We don't have a lot of commercial, we don't have a lot of high net worth homes, we have a small pot and we do an amazing job with it because of the lion's share of the work that you guys do to end up with a school system that is as good as any on a lean budget. And so where I sort of react and try to think about the people who have the competing interest is when people sort of lively get up, forgive me, and say, well, let's just spend more money because at the same time as there's this need at the school system, we also have an aging population and those people would like us to spend that small, tiny, we don't have a lot of money, more money on ALS and other fire services. And there's police and there's, and when you come to these budget meetings, you'll hear all of the draws to your, Paul, your excellent point, all of the draws on our tiny pot of money. And everybody works really hard to make sure that notwithstanding the fact that we don't have commercial and we don't have some large S of some, you know, we're not like Hyannis where there's a, people come in here for the summer and then leaving, so we have amazing infrastructure. We just have people working really hard like you guys are doing and like everybody else is doing. And so when somebody who's on a fixed income is terrified of the thought that there's going to be an override, I understand that. We're working within the budget without an override so that we can still provide the best school possible whilst also providing okay roads and phenomenal fire and phenomenal police. So I just wanted to say again, thank you, but also just to echo Susan's point, that it really is a balancing act and not just because somebody's no longer has their child in the school and maybe can't understand the need, doesn't mean that their opinion doesn't also matter.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, does anyone make one?
You know, I can't not.
I'll let Shannon go first.
As my colleagues frequently remind me at meetings. Jennifer Nguyen, Ken Lockland, I'm speaking as a resident, I just am a professional in special education as well as a teacher. I just would like to say that at some point, I feel very strongly that the math specialist should be re-implemented and I'm going to tell you why. I've heard from numerous parents that their child struggles with math and I don't think, I think it's more prevalent than people really talk about and that they're only able to see the specialist maybe once a week or once every two weeks. I know from working in the school system that to remediate a math difficulty, I'm not saying it's a disability, but if you start struggling at the younger ages, if you do not get help, extra help in the class than what the regular ed teacher gives you, it is extremely difficult when you get into more abstract concepts at the middle school age. And at the middle school level, it's very difficult to get that pull-out help unless you are on an IEP, unless you're diagnosed with a disability. And for most cases, most kids, it's not a true disability, but it's just a lap, you need more time because their brain hasn't developed the abstract thought yet. So I just want to say, and then it puts them behind for MCAS, and I know MCAS is not the be-all, end-all, however, it does put them behind, it's hard to catch up and we all need to pass MCAS in order to receive a diploma. So start struggling at the lower end, it's going to be harder to catch up. So I strongly, strongly think a math person needs to be re-implemented.
Thank you.
Briefly, and more as a committee member than a resident, I could go on as a resident, but as a committee member, there've been some questions, excuse me, about the enrollment projections. So that's not a huge, I mean, it's part of our budget for next year because enrollment is driving the kindergarten needs that we have. For those of you who have questions about the long-term, we did, Ingrid did a phenomenally thorough presentation to the select board in, I think, November, or it was November, I think.
Honestly, I can't remember if it was November or December, but it is on our website.
It was in November, it was, it was not, I don't think we'd had a snow day, we hadn't had our single snow day yet. It was a happier time. But the, it was in November and it projects out in the coming years what we anticipate seeing year over year as far as additions to the school system and also what the overall plan is to expand the school. I know there was one resident who was inquiring about what we were going to do for our structure and the footprint of the school. So if you are interested in hearing more about that, that is available through NCTV on their YouTube channel, so you can easily link that up.
Isn't there a PowerPoint as well?
There is. So the PowerPoint from the enrollment space study is on the front page of our website and if you click and you want to see, we did have an outside agency that specializes in enrollment and demographics, conduct a study and project out the long-term impact of all of the current 40B projects and development plans for the town. So all of that is on that site and it also shows you what options were considered and what the recommendation of the committee was for expansion and how that will accommodate the growth over those years. So if you want to see the live presentation, you can go to Norfolk Cable YouTube. If you want just the PowerPoint, it's on the front page of our website.
One last comment, we wrap it up, I think. To the, to Ms. Klein and the other woman that came up to talk about the various fees that we've had or do, or can have to help fund the different school activities. In finance and budgeting, that borders on what we call cost allocation and it's an extremely slippery slope. Because, and I think the answer to it is, this is a community and we are, you know, all funding everybody's needs and not kind of carving things out so that certain things can get done by certain people. That is the antithesis of what community means. So I just want to say that that is, while it's a creative idea and approach, it's, I don't think it's the type of thing that would work in this town. And that's not something I would really support. That's all. Thank you all for being here, thank you for all your comments.
And you are free to stay for the regular operating school committee meeting if you choose to.
It's just as exciting. I was going to say, before everybody gets up and remember, we still have another meeting, it's quite exciting, so.
Oh, for me?
So we, as a school, presented to the select board a zero-based budget, oh, gosh, now, I don't, maybe that was December.
January, January.
We did present that to the select board. And again, the question was, a fair question, what the board was looking to do was to, they asked all departments to show what a zero would look like so they could better understand what the needs of each department were.
And, and three percent, we did two budgets, zero and three.
I was one, beginning first initially heard about this, I was like, oh, my God, you're seriously kidding me, no way, you're not going to have zero in the board. And then, and I had known to do this, a little bit of research and I encountered a couple financial people, actually schooled about what it was. It was very, very helpful and I didn't do anything wrong. And for anyone who wasn't sure what that meant and who also wasn't the right way out of, it wasn't saying that we're going to fund everything at zero, what it was saying was, guys, I've done it, I'm wrong and that's what I initially thought of. What it was saying is, all departments come in and start at zero, don't start at what we had last year, start at zero and let's see where you end up. Maybe we got the four, okay, that's clear, you know, that's basically justified. Instead of just saying what we had last year and now it's good, justify some, we did and why didn't we have last year's budget? And then, basically that, I didn't know you would have.
We did that and then we didn't, we weren't able to do the February day because we didn't have an approved budget yet until, and we don't until after this hearing, so. Well, the committee's going to discuss it.
Absolutely, their next discussion.
So stick around.
You can see how we all vote.
So everyone attending, please come to town meeting, we need a motion to adjourn this meeting and avoid.
I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll second.
Second, all favor?
Aye, aye.
Thanks for coming.
Okay. We will now convene meeting number two for Wednesday, March 4th, 2020. And read the initial statement again, this time I'll read it. The Norfolk Public Schools offer a safe and sometimes loud, joyful and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family and community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world. Local, please.
Jennifer Nguyen.
Midora Champagne.
Paul Cochran. Thomas Doyle.
Ed Alardi.
Okay. I know we had a few people hung out, so I appreciate everyone staying, it's very nice to see. I don't know if we have any additional public comment beyond what we had just done, certainly more than welcome to, got the mics and everything, so, okay. Seeing none? All right, we will move on. We have some gifts to accept, we're going to need. We have gifts totaling three thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars and thirty-five cents. All of these are from Norfolk PTO, so thank you in advance. They are, to break it down, five hundred dollars for literacy to Freeman, thirteen hundred seventy-three dollars and twenty-three cents for the grade three coin wars, grade four, nine hundred and thirty-seven sixty-four cents for coin wars, grade five coin wars, five hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty cents, and grade six, who did not win the coin wars, they were two hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents. We certainly appreciate all of that. So that is a total of three thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars and thirty-five cents. Do we have a, do we have a motion to accept that donation? Make a motion to accept an Norfolk PTO gift.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Yes, I'd like to congratulate grade three.
And question, isn't grade six one of the biggest grades? Just putting that out there.
It all drops off. I'm at a middle school, it's like complete apathy.
Yeah, well done on grade three.
Nice.
Don't mess around with them, they come to play, so good job on their part. So all favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you. And then, secondly, we have some correspondence.
So I can frame the context of that.
Yeah, thank you.
So this is, I just wanted to share with the committee an email received from Maya, who is the company that insures the town and town facilities. They came out last week. Last year, we had a claim that went in for sprinkler failure at the H L A day and then the town also had a claim over a, two issues at the library, I'm not sure the specifics of those, but following that, they come out and we'll do an inspection and a site visit and they give you tips and strategies on loss prevention. And the group that came out sent an email to Matt to let him know how to test- And the group that came out sent an email to Matt to let him know how impressed they were with the Everstis School is Paper, the quality of the facilities, our preventative maintenance program. And I just wanted to share that because we don't always hear those kind of compliments. So this is the communication. I can read it as you'd like, but it basically says they were impressed with the approach and methods for loss prevention and loss reduction. Our methods and processes for replacing sprinkler heads in other buildings, inspections of the town facilities and knowledge of weak spots regarding cold air and damage to buildings is well noted, documented and overall well done. We're pleased that you and your staff are on top of all the safety and security issues of the town and at asset risk and we do appreciate the time spent to visit. The loss site and review programs are up. Kudos, Matt, for the work that you've done.
As someone who's spent the last 20 years in risk management, this is like a letter from Santa, so this is fantastic to see.
I never write those letters.
Well, I do. I have that letter of dedication, Madora, I do that. So that was very nice to see and it's very nice to see Matt get recognized for all his excellent work. It has always been consistently excellent, so that's great to see. All right, moving on, we are going to need a motion of the following. Ingrid's contract is going to be up and so as we typically do with the timeframe of when we look to begin negotiations with her, we need to get a motion and a vote to enter into negotiations with her for the purpose of seeing if we can come to a new contract agreement. So I want to see if we could get a motion for that.
I'd like to make a motion to enter into contract negotiations with the district.
Do we have a second? We'll beat into it. Any further comments, discussion? Okay, so we'll start working on that going forward. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All zero? All right, moving on to Ingrid.
All right, so in the interest of time, there is an update on activities of the BICO Collaborative. As we, as you know, we're members of the collaborative and we share specialized programming. So this just talks about some of the PD that they provided to member districts and some of their new programs. You can meet at the leisure if you have any questions, happy to answer them at the next committee meeting. We have several vote items tonight. The first is the school choice vote. So the district's policy is allow, is to allow non-resident students under the terms and conditions of the inter-district school choice law, were required to do that, but the committee does have the right to vote to withdraw from that annually and have to have a public vote and discussion prior to meeting first. It is my recommendation at this time, given the increasing enrollment we see across the district, that we vote to not participate in school choice. If you admit a child into school choice, so if we had, even if we had seats in grade two and we wanted to bring tuition in and enter those students, you have to admit that those students can remain to the sixth grade. And with the building and development being unpredictable, it would be my recommendation to vote to not participate.
Okay, so do we have a vote to decline participating in school choice? Or do we have a motion, excuse me?
I'll make a motion to decline participation in school choice.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next thing that is a vote item for tonight is, as we talked a little bit about earlier during the public hearing, we are currently out of space. We are short two classrooms next year at the HLL Day. We're hoping with renovating the tech office, we can create a small group instructional space and we allocate some things, but we will probably lose one of our special subject classrooms or the computer lab in order to accommodate the additional classrooms. We know based on the enrollment and space study that we presented to the select board, I believe in November or December, when we conclusively decide, but when we presented that, we know that enrollment's coming up to prime entity and we are going to very quickly be out of space here. We would like to request that the board vote to allow us to apply to the Math School Building Authority to determine whether or not they would consider it eligible for their core program, which would be for building and renovation. If we are eligible, then MSDA would cost, share the cost of that, that addition. Our past percentage rate, they have cost shared at about 15 to 51 percent. This does not commit us to moving forward with a building project and it does not commit us to any of the plans that we have. It's just, we have to vote to, I, I need to vote both of the school committee and the select board to even apply for consideration. So I'm requesting the committee vote to allow us tonight to move forward with an application to MSDA.
Do we have a motion to move forward the application to MSDA?
Aye, wholeheartedly move that we approve the application to the MSDA core program.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next is the New Student Opportunity Act that the department and the state passed. Basically is going to lead to significant funding, additional funding for education across the state. The vast majority of the funds are going to 35 percent of the districts. The goal of the act is to try to equalize spending and try, to try to create greater equity. Next year, we will be receiving only 28,000 total to the town in new chapter 70 money as a result of this act. But part of the legislation requires that all districts file with the Department of Ed a Student Opportunity Act spending plan that outlines how you're going to spend the new funds. Because we're losing significant funding to charter and other things and we're not in a position where, where we're adding new funds, you can also write your plan around using or designating those funds to support a current initiative. My recommendation would be that we use the funds to support our professional development costs within the district, so it won't be new revenue. We would just tag those funds to fund that portion of our budget. The school committee is required to vote on the Student Opportunity Act plan. They're due April 1st and the state has not released the application yet or the form. So I'm asking the committee, because we won't be meeting again, to vote to approve me to write that plan around using the existing funds to maintain the professional development programming, which is one of the allowable ways that you can spend funds. And I've attached information for you if you're interested in the requirements for that study.
Was the number six 21,000?
Twenty-eight thousand.
It is 20, about 28,000.
Twenty-eight thousand, okay. Okay, so do we have a motion to grant Dr. Lardy the authority to write?
Write and file.
Write and file for the Student Opportunity Act spending? So moved? Second? Okay.
It is supposed to be a consolidated form for districts that aren't receiving as much funds as some of the urban, so the range is high. Anybody receiving less than 1.5 million can write the short form. So we're on the very bottom of that 28,000. But we're in that category.
And the forms will be available when?
It's a consolidated spending.
The forms are going to be released like March 30th or what's the?
Probably. I called on Friday and they were hoping to get it up this week, but because we don't meet twice a month, we wouldn't have a chance to review it again.
All right. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
And then the last is that the committee needs to just often consider public comment and whether there's any changes or adjustments you want to make to the budget proposal as it is. And if not, to vote, go ahead to vote to approve the proposed budget for September.
Do we have a motion to accept the proposed budget?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Further discussion? Yeah, I mean, I think everything was essentially said there. I mean, we understand.
I didn't, yeah, I didn't want to do this when we were having, you know, it was, I think a lot of people had a lot of things to say, but I wanted to really commend Ingrid, our financial support team, all, to a far lesser extent myself, on the work that was done on the budget this year. It has been extraordinarily challenging. Everyone, as a parent of a student in the school system, has thoughts about what they would like to see. We all make an effort to be extremely pragmatic and objective when we're making these choices and trying to bring forth something that we think will best serve the school and also comport with the abilities of the town to fund the budget that we're going to ask for. So I'm confident that this is our very best effort as far as what we can do this year and we need to next year, given enrollment and some of the other challenges we're facing, so.
I agree. Thank you for your compliment.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your, your efforts on this as well, as well as Ingrid and Todd's.
I think the only two things that, that I had notes on from the public were requests for ads for increasing the library full time and for the developmental math, which our subcommittee felt that we recognize those critical needs, but we've just haven't funded to do that. But I certainly can continue to pursue any grant funding opportunities to address either those needs and will continue to do that. But I don't feel that, that we have, because of the limitations the town has, I just don't think we can add to those of the current request. It's a, it's a struggle for the town to balance certain requests, I'd say.
For argument's sake, and I know that I'll probably be the lone person here, but if you are not going to put an eighth grade, an eighth grade, sorry, an eighth kindergarten classroom in and you use that teacher salary to fund a developmental math person, what would the class size be?
Well, they're over the Math and School Committee policy limit with just the current enrollment.
So we said we have 149, assume for the sake of argument, we get another 10.
I think it'd be closer to, it's then 10 cents, so we're expecting 160.
So say 160 divided by seven, 23 students in a classroom.
Oh, with two teachers?
Not necessarily. The staff that we have.
But I think that, again, the school committee would then have to vote to change your class size policy and increase it. And I think that we would be really at risk of losing students to the two free public charter school kindergarten programs.
Just trying to think of.
Yep.
Point for creativity, but yeah.
And I also think the class size is more impactful for achievement overall than, than the development and math support. So when we prioritize that as an admin team, we felt that for revenue purposes as well as for educational impact, we think we should stay within.
And we did, we discussed that within the budget, so I guess it would be a misnomer to say that. We did discuss that within the budgets of the committee as well, in the sense that we could try to reallocate across even a different grade level, manipulating some of the class sizes there and, and the numbers just won't allow us to do that within a reasonable standard and then we still end up having seven, you'd have 23 children in kindergarten classroom, which would allow us to change essentially what our operating structure is as a school committee. We need to go in and manipulate what is allowable under our standards and guidelines.
And the other area, we did reduce the teaching position at the sixth grade and so the class size is going up to 23.2. But all of the research would suggest that the, the smaller class sizes are most critical at the lower elementary and for many of our kindergarten students that haven't been to preschool, it's, it's their first time in, in school at all. So the research does support, especially for kids as they're learning to read and early literacy, kind of the smaller class sizes. So I wouldn't want, I wouldn't be comfortable exceeding the class size at kindergarten.
I was just asking.
Yeah, no, I think it's a good point.
And again, I just would like to at some point have the principals or whoever try to come up with some creative ways to help those students. I know that there's an after-school MCAS or something support program. Somebody told me about? And I know after-school, it's really hard, they're really tired. Maybe that math support could be done in the morning. I don't know. I know that's on hold, you know, getting people and whatnot, but I'm just hoping that it is something that will somehow be creatively addressed.
We do have, and we have been able to add over the last couple of years, we increased to a 5.5, so we now have 1.5 developmental math teachers up here. And I was able to write a, a grant for a career professional to support that program in the past and we certainly, I can certainly look at that.
Couple of random thoughts on the budget. I was just looking when you were making the presentation, I think the first budget I was on was the cut of 0.96. For some reason, I came back another year after that and kind of left, but. Just other random points, as far as everyone asking that we increase various things, I think we all agree, we'd love to, we'd love to go up nine percent a year, but simply not feasible. A number of people made the point, there's just too many other things that the town needs and various sections of the town needs and everything like that, so that's not possible. I think we do a very nice job and hopefully we demonstrated that as far as the level detail we go into in terms of planning a budget and trying to balance everything out as best we can. We've kind of clawed our way back from the 0.96, the reduction of 4% the following year, but we're still certainly not where we are. This is going to take still another number of years to get back to where we are, but I feel pretty confident between all of us, we kind of put our heads together and figure out a creative way to do it. So we'll get there. And then a separate point, I know Paul had touched on this. Essentially, a question was raised as far as almost additional fees, usage fees, if you will, I don't know if that's the right term for it. I'd have a real hard time getting around to supporting something like that and in essence, that ends up being sort of a stealth tax and I, I, I think that lacks a level of transparency. I think that's a little, it's, it's an equity question for me, I think it lacks fairness. I think one of the.
It excludes a lot of our children that most are in the programming for the important.
I would agree with you and I think, I mean, even just the, the band program now still having these associated with it. I know every year we wish we could reduce the.
Yeah, if that's in the, would love to see.
That it would be fantastic and, and I know that there are kids who don't participate or families don't consider participating, you know, for that reason and it's, it's, it's tremendous program. It's amazing. It's, it's really unfortunate that there are kids who aren't participating in that, so I, I would echo your statement.
I would just struggle getting behind something, particularly if you're looking for someone that's say a young family or a family with young children and that's an expense. That's a great expense. We've all gone through this or are going through it. I don't want to add something else to their lives. They have enough going on. I don't want to add another surcharge or cell tax or however you want to term it to their life. I understand the sentiment, it's, it's, I, it makes, logically, it makes a lot of sense. I just, I don't see how I could ever get around to that, so I think essentially that was what Paul was saying, so. I mean, again, point for creativity, we'll look at everything and anything we possibly can. I just can't see it ever being something viable, but I guess we'll keep looking. So barring any other further comments, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Jeff is not able to be here tonight to look at the Lady King's Philip Committee Report and we just had two votes on policies. They were incidental changes that were based on changes to the law with educational opportunities for military children and for children in foster care. There were no changes as of the last reading and again, the incidental changes are driven by changes to the state law.
Okay, so do we have a motion to accept the incidental changes to the educational opportunities for children in foster care?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then separately, then, there's still incidental changes in the second one as well, so correct?
Yep.
Okay. So do we have a motion to accept the incidental changes in the educational opportunities for children in foster care?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Second reading for three other policies. There were no changes after the first reading, so there's nothing new in them. I don't know if anybody had any additional changes after reviewing the second one.
I don't know at this point, at least I don't. All right, so then we need a motion to approve the minutes from our February 11th meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting, uh, meeting minutes from the February 11th meeting, 2:20.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
My name is Paul Cochran.
I appreciate your level of detail there, Paul.
How's it smell?
I'll settle with Paul Cochran.
Oh, it's a bean.
That happens. All in favor?
Once a year, right?
Aye.
Aye. And then we are looking at April 14th for our next meeting. Does that work for everybody?
Yes.
And then finally, we just need a motion to adjourn?
I moved to adjourn.
We have a second.
Second.
No further touch on that one. Boy, so roll call vote on that one, so.
Aye.
Aye, and then roll call.
Oh, Jennifer.
Madora Champagne.
Paul Cochran.
Thomas Doyle.
Thank you.